Call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have a quorum present? Welcome everyone to our meeting to see if you will stand for the prayer and pledge, please. As gracious as heavenly Father, we're so grateful to you for the many blessings that you've given us. Father, we understand that those blessings are sometimes more than we deserve and we fall short of your expectations and your grace, but you give them to us anyway, Lord, and we're thankful for it. We thank you for those who are gathered here today and for the ability for this body to serve our community and make it a better place to live. We ask that you would be with our state and national leaders as they conduct our business and as they work to try to make our state and our country a better place to live. We always, Lord, want to take a moment to thank those who serve our country, both here and abroad, and particularly those in armed services who are in harm's way. We ask that you would protect them and bring them home. We thank you for all that you are, all that you do, and all that you provide. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members, I will entertain a motion to, for the adoption of the Q and A tenth minutes.
Second.
The motion is a second in discussion. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Council members, we'll move to old business. We do have somewhat of a unique situation tonight in that we have five public hearings, although two of those are related and three are related. And what, if I do not have any opposition from council, what I am going to ask the clerk to do once we get to that point is for him to read the two related individually as we are required to do, and then the three related individually as we are required to do. However, when it comes to a time for us to vote, I'm going to ask for you to vote on the two related together and the three related together. Does everyone understand? Any opposition to that? If not, ladies and gentlemen, allow me just a moment to state to you how we're going to structure the hearings. Once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, I'll ask the clerk to read the particular proposed amendments, amendment, in this case amendments. We will hear what the advisory decision of our planning and zoning commission was. Then we'll recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment, and I'll hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition. If there is opposition, you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal. When I recognize any person or persons who would like to testify, I ask that you first approach the podium, give your name and your address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so. However, in essence of time, I do request that you keep your comments as brief as possible and certainly germane to the subject at hand. The first ordinance or two ordinances we are considering are ordinances 011-012. This is for special use of 900 South Jefferson Street for use as a motorcycle sales and repair shop, and also 902 South Jefferson Street for use as a motorcycle share, uh, sales and repair shop along with an existing auto repair on both of those. So I would ask the clerk if he would read both of those individually, please.
Posted and advertised?
Oh, I'm sorry. Has it been posted and advertised?
Yes, it has.
You know my cheat sheet better than I do.
Uh, 0-1405-112. Conduct public hearing of an ordinance demanding the land development code to allow a special use of property located at 900 South Jefferson Street owned by Armando Castillo. The property is currently zoned CC and the owner requests a special use for a motorcycle sales and repair shop along with his existing automobile repair shop. 0-1405-012. Conduct a public hearing of an ordinance demanding the land development code to allow special use of property located at 902 South Jefferson Street owned by Armando Castillo. The property is currently zoned CC and the owner requests a special use for a motorcycle sales and repair shop along with his existing automobile repair shop.
Would you present the advisory decision of planning zoning, please?
It was a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Armando Castillo, 127 Okando Drive. Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you for the opportunity to come here before you, uh, we've been here in Millersville since seventy-three, doing business here in the same spot, 902 South Jefferson Street since then, and always been working on cars. We see a need to do motorcycle repair with the prices of gasoline going up and down, especially heading up. You were starting to see more and more two wheels out there on the road, and nowhere in Millersville to fix them. And we just feel like this is a great opportunity, Southside of town, uh, to, uh, to be able to, uh, to tap into that and, uh, and hopefully bring, uh, more, more business, uh, to Millersville. So basically, with your permission, we would like to, uh, to be able to get started where we can, start, uh, repairing them and, and go ahead and, and start selling them. Our intentions are to, uh, to be able to build, grow the business out of the shop we're in right now, which is 902, and then move it and be individually by itself over at 900. It's what, uh, what we'd like to do. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Castillo? Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
You know, I'd like to ask if I'm in the right standing to be here tonight.
You are, sir, but we all know who you are, but if you would, state your name and address, sir.
I'd like to say that I've talked to Mr. Armando on numerous occasions about this and I hold hardly support it, and I'd like to give you the reason of why I do. I live only five blocks from his shop, and I think if anybody had any problems with it, it would be me. But this is not what you might consider a redneck operation. It is a good thing, and I say that because we have people that come from middle Georgia to Central State Hospital, uh, Veterans Home by motorcycle and, um, other support groups. And this is an entity that I think it would help the people that come from Dublin, Conyers, Acuna, Augusta. And, uh, you never know when you're gonna have a breakdown, and I think this would be a nice thing, as also on the number one agenda for Southside. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
My name is Richard Burke in twelve sixty-five Wood Drive.
I think we got that, but I do appreciate you mentioning it again. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Since there was no opposition, uh, would be redundant for rebuttal. Council members, do you have any questions or comments? This concludes the presentation of evidence, and I'll ask for a motion on the ordinance, uh, together, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the findings of the finding that's on the board and approve the request for both ordinances.
That's the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. Hearing and ask clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move to the next three related ordinances, and they are 006, 007, and 008. And the same applies, ladies and gentlemen, as far as the structure is what we read on the other two. These are to rezone or consideration to rezone, eleven point seven-nine acres at 361 Dole's Boulevard, one point five-five acres at 335 Millage Avenue, and then point three-seven acres at 351 Dole's Boulevard. Now, I'd ask the clerk if the public hearing has been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, they have been.
Would you read each ordinance?
0-1404-006. Conduct public hearing of an ordinance demanding the land development code to rezone approximately eleven point seven-nine acres from AR to PD. The property is located at 361 Dole's Boulevard, tax map M-82 parcel 115. The property is currently owned by Camille G. Land and Marguerite G. King Lovelace, and will be combined with two other properties for a total acres of approximately thirteen point six in order to develop fifty-three lots. 0-1404-007. Conduct public hearing with ordinance demanding the land development code to rezone approximately one point five-five acres from SFR2 to PD. Property is located at 335 Millage Avenue, tax map M-82 parcel 108. The property is currently owned by Randy Smith and will be combined with two other properties for a total acres of approximately thirteen point six in order to develop fifty-three lots. 0-1404-008. Conduct public hearing of an ordinance demanding the land development code to rezone approximately point three-seven acres from SFR2 to PD. The property is located at 351 A Dole's Boulevard, tax map M-82 parcel 112. The property is currently owned by Marguerite M. Bell, care of H.P. Bell, and will be combined with two other properties for a total acres of approximately thirteen point six in order to develop fifty-four lots.
Could you present the advisory decision of our planning zoning, please?
It was their recommendation that not be approved.
On all three?
On all three, yes.
First of all, before we get into our testimony, I would like to call on Ms. Mervyn Graham for code enforcement.
This is fifty-four lots. He had originally planned on fifty-three. I know somebody was reading, and one of them said fifty-four, one said fifty-three. What he did is he changed it into a cul-de-sac, which enabled him to add a new lot on there. When this hits up, I will show the, this is one of the diagrams here. Um, but what this is, is he will be doing, he will be combining all three of the lots, which will, and then he's gonna subdivide them and sell them into fifty-four lots. Each lot would have a minimum of a twenty-five-foot front setback. It's gonna have a minimum of a eight-foot side setback and a minimum of a thirty-five rear setback. The minimum lot width is gonna be fifty with a minimum lot size of zero point one-two-one acres. Right now, our requirements in the SFR2 zoning district, because this is a planned development, which is like Pacific, he sets his own lot sizes and his own setbacks. Currently, the requirements would have been the front setback of thirty, the side setback of ten, and the rear setback of thirty. And our minimum lot width is seventy with the lot size, the minimum is ten thousand square feet or zero point two-two-two-nine-five. Um, but this development, he will have fire hydrants placed a maximum of every five hundred feet. He's gonna have street lights placed at a maximum of two hundred feet apart, and the streets will also be having curving gutter, um, and sidewalks. He's also got, yeah, sidewalks, is what he has agreed to do with this development. I don't know if, this was one, I think this is, and of course the valve will come up next. But this is his outline, looking at, you know, each lot will be sold individually. Like, this is what he's helping for the lodges, and this is the layout of it. I guess unless there are any more questions for me, I will turn it over to the valve worker to do it.
Thank you.
Answer questions. Do y'all want me to read this down here for you? You got ones that look clear? Okay.
Well, anybody like to speak in favor?
I would.
Go ahead.
My name is Gary Spillers, and I live at 146 Wildwood Lane in Villageville. And what, uh, the reason we're here tonight is that, uh, we were not recommended, uh, in our, uh, presentation to the zoning board. And the reason for that, I believe, is there's a lot of confusion on how the layout of the development was and the, we talked about at, at the end about putting in a cul-de-sac as opposed to putting in a, a road that would come all the way through and come out to Dole's, and there was some concern about traffic and what would happen. And I think, uh, the council, the, the board just said, you know, we just, we don't want any part of that till you get it cleared up. And, and we have, have cleared it up. Um, one of the, one of the areas that is, is critical is this cul-de-sac right here. We had originally brought that, uh, road all the way back out to Dole's Boulevard. Now, it had a gate on it and was going to be an emergency on it, but, uh, still, Ms. Sanders, who lives next door, was a little concerned with that. So we went back and looked at it and said, well, the cul-de-sac is the best thing. And she was concerned, I think she said, there'd be, uh, the road would be twenty-five feet from our veterans. And where, in this, there won't be, there's a house, this existing house, it's about a hundred and fifty feet from her house now, but there won't be a house within two hundred feet with this plan, the backside of this house and her house here. So that's all, solves any problem that she, she would have with that. Plus, it, it makes it work better. What I say makes the subject work better is that the traffic patterns that you go in, we have it coming in, uh, off of Montgomery Street right here, and coming, turning, uh, turning off of Millage Avenue onto Fish and Creek Road. And as you turn off, we, we're gonna have, we, that's another major change we've had. We've added, uh, to be a gated community. So even though this is, sits next to Dole's Boulevard, it is not part of Dole's Boulevard. This is a track completely separate. It's a, uh, we think it's a, an absolutely beautiful tract of land. It's got awesome trees all over that we preserve, a lot of wildlife that we really go out of our way to preserve and to, to make it one of the, I guess I can say coolest little community in, uh, in Villageville. And downtown Villageville needs something like this. One, some other things to consider is our target market. There's some discussion in, um, at the board meeting about, is this gonna be for students? It's not designed that way. What this is, is fifty-four building lots, and we're going to market and sell to builders. We can't say that a builder may not come in and build something and rent it to students. That's, we can't, we can't control that. What we can control is the, the way they build it and the way it's treated. Because we have, not only a gated community, we also have a restricted covenants that will, uh, give guidelines in these buildings being built. And then we'll have parking restrictions and, uh, and, uh, the target market we're looking for is the individual families that wanna live downtown without a big yard, and that they can walk, walk to restaurants and, uh, back and forth, and this is a, uh, a great location for that. Retirees who want, wanna live downtown and take advantage of the downtown amenities, graduate students, professors, employees of the college, it just goes on and on. And there's a market there that really, that we have touched here in Villageville that we're going to, and that's the baby boomers from around the country. I have, I go out of my way, especially around the lake area and on, on our golf courses, to talk to people and say, what brought you to Villageville? And it's usually the golf of the lake. But what we do, we, we've got a panacea here of a showplace for, for the country, for the right kind of people to come here, to live here, and become productive citizens. That's what we're looking for. Second, uh, major thing is the job creation. This development and its building construction will create between fifty to seventy-five jobs over an eighteen month to two-year build out. And, uh, it's people that, uh, like when a development like this is turned down, it's not so much the builders and developers get hurt, it's the stores, it's the, uh, the architects, it's the, uh, insurance people. Everybody gets it in the teeth when a development like this doesn't make them. And we are proud to say we think this will. Not only that, it'll give, uh, increased tax revenues of what it's been collecting now on these three tracks over about the last twenty to thirty years is about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And that's not a very good use of land in that location. And what we're saying is that let's turn that twenty-five hundred dollars a year into a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand by building between twelve and a half to fifteen million dollars worth of houses that will make this neighborhood, make the lot better. And I'd like to introduce at this time my partner, John Leonard. And John wants to address, uh, for the group, how and why the investment in, how to improve a community. I sent to each one of the, uh, uh, councilmen a package that, one, a couple pages in there that shows my experience in creating new neighborhoods and taking old neighborhoods and making them really, really viable. I've done it two or three times in several countries. There's a letter in there from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. There's a letter in there from Tallahassee, Florida. I know what I'm doing when I'm doing these kinds of things. John, would you talk, talk to us about an investment partner?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name's John Leonard, and, uh, my address is 2472 Jet Ferry Road in Dunwoody, Georgia. Um, one of the things that I wanted to address, um, from the zoning meeting, some of the concerns was that there's a lot of renters in the neighborhood. It's tough to see on the map, but, uh, on this overhead, but there's green dots are all renters in those, in those homes, and the red dots are homeowners that live in the homes. And there's probably about, uh, I think sixty percent, seventy percent of those that are renters already. And as you drive through the neighborhood, you can see in some of the objections where some of those rental, rental houses were run down. And absent new investment and new money that comes into this neighborhood, it's just gonna continue to be in a downward spiral because the property values are going to get worse if there's no investment made. Our proposal with this fifty-four lots is to bring about twelve to fifteen million dollars of investment money into this particular neighborhood. And what will happen, the houses we're projecting are probably two hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar market value. Right now, some of the houses are selling in there. I think one just sold for eighty thousand dollars. When people see a two-hundred and two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar investment, they're able to buy an eighty or a ninety thousand dollar house, and they'll put forty to fifty thousand dollars of improvement in that house to make it better and bring it up to standards of today and improvement of, of, uh, lifestyle and of the whole neighborhood. And so, uh, you know, we obviously look for your support to do that. And as Gary said, the investment dollars of the taxes, the jobs that are gonna be created, uh, the dollars that'll be spent in the neighborhood and in the community will increase a, uh, just the economic value of that, of that area. Uh, so we appreciate your support.
Any questions, council members?
I've got a question to either one of you. The one thing I don't understand, and I, I, I do understand money and I understand trying to make a profit and all of that, but I, I don't quite understand the, the thinking behind the density of if, if you're, if you're looking at trying to benefit a neighborhood and yet you're putting houses on, on half a lot size of what already exists that you're, you're putting in here. I, I, if you can answer that.
Would you, would you mind coming?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. They can't hear you outside of this here.
What exists now in the neighborhood is, uh, you know, lot sizes are maybe a little larger but not substantially larger. What doesn't exist is the road improvements that are, that are there. I think the goal of, of the community is to make this more of a walkable, um, community. It also connects, we have an easement that goes down to the, uh, the riverway, um, and make that a little bit better. We'll have sidewalks so people will be able to walk through. Um, you know, to address, you know, how you make that, I mean, one of the things from an investment standpoint is to put an improvement in here of roads and sidewalks, which are required to do, and street lights and fire hydrants that don't exist in the neighborhood now. It takes a lot of money to do that. And anybody that's gonna put that money in needs to have an investment, and that's where we go for fifty-four lots. Um, you know, will be probably a point where that return on investment will make it happen, and the investors will be happy to put that money into the transaction. You know, with two or three lots back there, you still have to put a road back there to get you into those lots. It just doesn't make any financial sense to do that.
One, one other thing, Steve.
Yeah, would you come up, thank you.
These slots through here are all deep foot lots. And the, and the, oh, the layout originally was to continue on with Murphy Drive up there and deep foot lots. But the original plan, it's not, not all that much.
Any other questions, Ms. Schinholster?
I don't have a question right now, but I'd like to correct you on something that you said. You said in that neighborhood, there is no fire hydrants and no street lights. I beg to differ with you on that.
There's, there's no curves and gutters, and there's no sidewalks, I don't believe.
Well, there are no sidewalks because it, because it is an older neighborhood, but I just wanted to make a correction on that, that that is not true. Um, one question that I, I do have, is one of the things that you mentioned, was about, um, jobs created, how, roughly how many jobs you have not created?
Fifty to seventy-five.
Until the project is complete, right?
Eighteen months to two, twenty-four months.
Okay. So it's just to, you know, when, when, when you come to a community and say, we're creating jobs, we're creating temporary jobs. I, I, I understand what you're saying about creating jobs, but they're not jobs that are going to stay in the community.
Well, you're, not all fifty to seventy-five will stay, but it will create more jobs because of the dollars that are invested in there. As Gary said, you know, insurance, uh, buying groceries, that's, that's an investment that you're gonna have fifty-four more homeowners in there paying tax dollars. So I think that will create some economic opportunity in the city.
And also it increases the impact fees that, that come back to the city and the expenses to the city, um, and user, user fees and, and, um, different things that the city has to provide for those additional people that you're gonna put there. So they kind of balance themselves out.
I would say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue would probably cover some of the user fees there. So, you know, from twenty-five hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think that's a positive economic input to that.
That's also an estimate, though.
Yeah, one fifty houses at, you know, that, that amount, I think you can get pretty close to that number.
Anything else, council? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah.
My name is Larry Spillers, and I've lived in Millersville and Baldwin County all my life. In fact, I grew up on Charleston Street. It's a short distance from Dole's Boulevard. And, uh, we have a beautiful, two colleges here. Millersville has turned to a college town. It's a college town. College town retirees, and I just think this is the one And I just think this is a wonderful opportunity for college students to live and walk to school. I had a kid graduate from Georgia Tech, and a kid graduated from Georgia. Their cars were useless, and they had to walk to school. And Millersville is the same way. You had to walk to school. There's nowhere to park if you drive. So I think if you look at the project from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars fully developed, I mean, that's nine hundred thousand dollars in six years, or a million dollars in six years that the city of Millersville will take in. And while we shouldn't do anything for money, we do need to provide the college kids and retirees housing here. I worked for forty years with Georgia Power. At that time, I worked in the land department. And we had to cross people with power lines. And I did that for ten years, and people just seemed to always do the right thing. We had no condemnations in ten years because people realized the need for these power lines. And I hope Millersville realizes the need for this beautiful gated community in Doles Boulevard. It'll only help that area. The streets are twenty-three feet wide with some places with sidewalks already that need to be redone. But I just think it's the right thing to do to pass this.
Councilmembers, any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Julian Hood. I live at one-twenty-two Taylor Drive here in Millersville. I've been back in Millersville about ten years, went to school here. I think what we're seeing here is people are beginning to want to spend money and develop things, get things going again. They're putting out a product that is needed here in Millersville. And the thing we have to recognize is, is if we don't grow, then we begin to die. And that's what Millersville needs. This is something that's not being put together in slapdab fashion. This is well thought out, been worked on for quite a long time to try to put this project together. I think the big thing we have to look at is the multiplier effect that spending this money is going to have, which is you've got sales tax on building materials, you've got taxes coming in from people that are working on these jobs. You've got equipment out there that's buying fuel. All these things generate money, and they generate it for the community. Yes, the community has to put some resources into it to make this happen, but if you don't get in there and invest something and start making something happen, then like I say, things begin to deteriorate. I think that it's well thought out. I have been in other communities and college communities where I've seen similar projects going on, such as Columbia, South Carolina. They have one that was in a neighborhood very similar to this, and it brought the standard of the neighborhood up tremendously. So I'd like to see you folks approve this so that, Millersville, we've taken our licks over the last several years of losing things. It's time that we start thinking as a community as a whole and what it can do for everyone in general. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, 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 ma'am.
I do have a question for the developer. I heard the gentleman say this was something that Millersville needs. Do you have a need impact or a need study that can substantiate that? The last time that, and I was here the night of planning and zoning, and I, you know, I know how many students are at Georgia College, and I know how many apartments we have that are already available for college students in the city. And I know how many college students live in Carrington Woods and in Doles Boulevard area and every other neighborhood and community in the city already. So I'm just trying to figure out what, where did you determine the need for this type of housing? This type of development?
I tell you what's going to prove that is when a bank loans you fifteen million dollars. And if they loan you that kind of money, there's a need. But what we see this as a need is, is where can you go within ten blocks, five blocks, ten blocks of downtown and buy a new house? Tell me. Tell me.
Most downtowns are already established.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are. Most downtowns are already established.
They aren't here.
They are, this downtown is already established. That's why you, these neighborhoods have been around a long time. They're not dilapidated, they haven't fallen apart. They're already established.
Most neighborhoods, you're right. Is that what you're talking about, most neighborhoods?
You said where could you go in downtown and buy a new house or find a new development? I said most of the neighborhoods around your downtowns are already established and developed.
I know, that's what makes this one so valuable to, I mean, this piece of property is great, and it sits next to a neighborhood that used to be great. It's not great anymore, but it can be again. It's like from what John was saying. You've got to go in to this area where there's a need, where there's land, and create a product.
But you're not showing to me, you keep saying that you're going to improve the Doles Boulevard neighborhood, but you're going to put a, it's just like having an old building and putting new furniture. You're going to put new furniture on a part of, in the part of the old building, but that's not showing improvements in the Doles Boulevard area. So that's deceptive.
It's a return on investment. In other words, if the houses that we build are in the two-hundred, two-hundred and twenty-five thousand range, and they sell, which they're going to sell, then you can create more rental income in the other houses just by having that. And John made a great point is, what will happen is people will come in and either buy houses that are in the development and pay a premium price for them because they know they can get the return back. It's not, it's just a simple math that if you have something nice, it's going to sell, and somebody will pay the price, and then they will reap the return from it. It's a great, great place of property.
Right place, right time. Address the need as well, what you said about college students. This isn't geared specifically to college, but certainly the neighborhood has predominantly college renters in there now. A lot of the communities that are the big apartment complexes, The Grove, Mallory's deal, Bellamy, all those properties are a hundred percent pre-leased for the coming school year, and they were that way probably in February and March. So that goes to show you that they're a hundred percent pre-leased six months before school starts. There's a need for housing for students of that caliber. And, you know, I think we'll see some of this. I mean, there's been some construction in downtown Millersville, a fourplex here and there, a cottage where they've already been sold prior to completion to parents who want to buy that money and have their child live in that house. That's already going on right now. So this will be some additional product that might fit that market as well. But there is a need, if you look at the occupancy of the student housing that's out there, a hundred percent pre-leased dictates the need for additional beds.
Anything else, council? Okay, would anybody like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Gail Yeomans. I live in one of these, and I resent what you said about our neighborhood. It's not a dilapidated neighborhood. There's fine people that live there. Yes, my house is a hundred, my house is nineteen thirty-eight. It's a landmark, it's an older home. But there's neighborhood, the neighborhood is getting families back. I live at three-seventy-one Doles Boulevard. I've lived there, I've lived in Millersville for fifty-five years. This is my home. I didn't move away. I love Millersville. It's a close community. We don't need somebody coming in telling us that our neighborhood's not worth it, that they're going to build another fifty-four, two-hundred thousand dollar homes. But we have no sidewalks. We're still going to have the traffic, I don't care what you say. College kids are still going to come by. They're going to walk all hours of the night. They're going to drive down Doles because it's easier, and it's a fast shot. They're going to still do that. They're still going to come in, and the noise. There's going to be more noise in the neighborhood and town. What are you going to do about the noise? You've got fifty-four more families, that more noise. I work from home. I have to be able to concentrate. And right now, there is still a lot of traffic going by, and a lot of it's the college. But I live right in between. There's a college that rent across from me, never had a problem with it. Two doors down, there's a slum. It's been addressed before. It's still a slum. It hadn't been cleaned up, but, you know, we still have the same street. We don't, you're going to improve yours, but we're not, we don't have the road to have any new sidewalks put in. Our sewage system is not up to date. It can't handle very much. We have streetlights. We have fire hydrants. Is it, I have a question, is this going, you said it's going to increase the value. Is it going to increase our property value, or is it going to decrease ours? You know, we have to think about that. I work two jobs to pay for my house because I love my house. You know, Georgia College has got dorms for the kids. And what about the renters now that rent out to college? If these come in and all the college kids start going there, what's going to happen to the people that use the renters' income when they don't have it no more? Are their houses going to get foreclosed? Are they going to get worse shape to where we do live in a rundown community? You know, there's some people, this renter income is how they survive. That's their extra income. What's going to happen to that? Again, I mean, it's easy to say you're going to do this, but Georgia GMC's not going to use it because they're not going to rent. They're fixing to build new dorms for their college kids coming in. So they're not going to use it. GMC, you know, that's a big one, but you can't. Why not go somewhere like Central State? They're looking for developers to come in and redevelop all that land. It's close to downtown, it's still close to the college, and you wouldn't be messing with a neighborhood. I mean, we're trying, we're family oriented, or it's becoming, families are moving back in. The older people are still there, they don't want to leave. You know, and with me, I keep the noise, I keep my property behind me full of the trees and everything to buffer the noise and for the little animals to come up, you know, and the owls. If you take, you're going to leave some land for the owls, and the little animals can still be there? You know, you can't replace them once the owls are gone, they're gone. Like I said, that's, the noise, the traffic's still going to be the same. You're talking, he's talking about people buying these. Where are these people going to get the money? Millersville is not like it was. We're slowly coming back, but we don't have the employment for people to buy two-hundred thousand dollar homes. Not right now, and, you know, eighteen month job, that's fine. But then it's gone, and we're still back in the same thing. We need businesses to come in, and I know they're slowly coming in. In fact, I know of some that are opening pretty soon. But you've got to have the business to support the purchase of these type of properties. And that's all I have to say. I mean, I hope you don't, I hope you don't go against what council said, I mean, what the zoning committee said, because it's not going to help us. It's going to hurt us. The people that live there, it's going to hurt us. As I said on the zoning committee, I've been tried, we broke into twice. And I had to get a security system. The college kids, you know, they party on the weekends. You're still going to have the noise, you're going to have more noise. And they say it's not college, but they're gearing toward the college because that's right now basically the only people that can afford it. Because I barely right now make above minimum wage where I work. But that's all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jane Villard Waldauer. I'm eighty-two years old. I was born in Millersville, and I haven't hardly gotten out of the city limits in my lifetime. Now, will y'all of you gentlemen please show me where three-twenty Millage Avenue is on that map? You one or the one that says I live in a trashy place, so get up there and show me where it is. You did, you said that our neighborhood was no good. You're going to build a better one.
I said some of the houses.
Get up there and show me three-twenty on Millage Avenue.
Hold on.
Do it.
Ms. Waldauer, control yourself.
I can't.
I just want to address, because there's a couple comments now about the neighborhood, the reality is, those were comments that other people brought up in the zoning meeting that were against it, saying that the neighborhood is declining. And so that is that, you know, it's not, it's a nice neighborhood. The problem is.
Show me three-twenty Millage Avenue.
I think so. It is not saying this.
All right, now wait a minute.
What you're saying is the problem is that the red dots are owners, and the green ones are not owner occupied. That's the issue.
All right, now wait a minute. Sit back down. Now, I live three-twenty Millage Avenue, and right across the street from me is a wooded area. I enjoy my neighbors. I have owls, raccoons, I have snakes, and probably have skunks. I enjoy my neighbors. Now, are you all going to come over there and chop down all those trees? So I will have a little Merriweather house across the street from me. And they're going to look at me and say, look at that cheap house across the street from me. That neighborhood is a bad neighborhood. That neighborhood has been there since the year one, and we are doing the best we can to keep it up. There's some people who own the houses in that neighborhood who are not keeping it up because they are not doing what they're supposed to do. I don't want a whole bunch of people moving in. And wait until I die, and then, you know, chop down my trees.
That might be another thirty years.
Hell, I hope not. You know, and I've got a street light. Sir, I've got a street light right across my bedroom window, and it shines in my bedroom every night. It isn't the moon, I see, it's that damn street light.
Watch our language.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
If I had a shotgun, I'd probably shoot that light out.
Well, by law, you could carry one, but I hope you don't have one on you.
No, I don't. I wouldn't know how to use it anyway. And another thing is, I guess, you know, when you get in my hands, you get deaf. There is a lot of noise. But now, if we call the police, they're real good to come and check on it. You move these old people, there's going to be a whole lot more, and the police are going to be real busy. Please, please vote against this, but wait until maybe five years. They've got enough money.
Hold your applause. Let's be dignified.
I don't want to follow that.
I don't know if you can say anything.
Yeah, I don't know what else you can say.
Oh, ma'am, I'm Travis, and councilman Travis Strickland, I live at one thirty Meeks Road. Um, my relationship to this development project is because I own three properties over in the neighborhood. I've got two over on Dole's Boulevard. One of them used to be my personal home and my grandfather's home, we've owned it since about nineteen thirty. And I've got one right around the corner, um, close to where the entrance is supposed to be on, on Montgomery Street. So, I know emotions always play into these type of situations. I'm gonna try to look at it from a different, uh, stance. I'm not gonna get into the emotions, I just would like to present some facts to you. And then, you know, hope that y'all can make your best decision based on that. I wrote some notes here. Um, go make some comments, and I've actually got a couple of questions too for, when I get through. First, uh, the roads in those neighborhoods, I'm assuming all of y'all have been over there. Two full-size vehicles cannot even go down the road at the same time. Uh, so if you're adding more traffic to this, that's gonna add more congestion. I think even when the developers mentioned something about the lack of sidewalks, they're absolutely right. The, uh, college students over there, they would, they walk and they bike to, to class and to school. So, now you've got two vehicles that can't go down the road at the same time. You add students walking, you add a bicycle, you add no sidewalks. And that's, that's just a recipe for disaster. I don't know what the infrastructure plans are for the city of Milledgeville. But if this thing goes through, you're gonna have to take a, a hard look at that. Cause this, there's no way that all those things at the same time could possibly function together. And you've also got, you know, I don't know why this is, but the students love to park in the yards. You know, they've got, they live there, they bike their friends over, then they park in the yards, and then they back, then they'll park on the street. So then you add another piece of that puzzle. So, you know, you're looking at a, at an infrastructure nightmare, uh, when you're adding that sort of, uh, development to this situation. So, just would like for you to consider that. For full disclosure on this also, I would tell you, I would take a little bit of disagreement to the percentages of renters versus owners. My three properties are rental. I have a family in one, I have a, um, young couple just getting started in my second one. And I have, I do have students in the third one, but they're long-time students, they've been there two and a half, three years. So, I'm not, um, I'm not a landlord that gets the students to move in and out every single year. So, the other thing, I'm a numbers guy. Uh, I also have a active Georgia real estate license. They mentioned the houses were gonna be in a neighborhood of two-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. I can tell you, there are not fifty-four families in Ballin County that are looking for a two-hundred twenty-five thousand dollar house or can't afford a two-hundred twenty-five dollar, thousand dollar house.
You'll have a chance to rebut here.
Look at some of these other developments that have gone up, maybe one hundreds to one thirties. But you, you don't have the clientele for that kind of housing. So, if you're not gonna put a family in the house, then it goes to students. Well, in order to rent a house, there's two-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars out. To make the rent roll, to make the insurance taxes, you're looking at twenty-five hundred dollars a month in rent income. Now, the average rental income for that neighborhood over there is three hundred dollars per bedroom. So, now you've gotta put seven to eight students in each house, which is against city code. It's economics one-on-one, it won't work. With all due respect to developers, it won't work. So, I've got three over there, you know. Um, fifty-four units. The developer also mentioned that, uh, fifteen million dollar loan. I would like to ask the developer if he's got a good faith letter from a bank. Saying that they, uh, have the financial backing to make this happen. But all due respect, and this is my opinion, the rest were facts, this is my opinion, I just don't have the confidence in this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Yes ma'am.
My name is Erin P. B. Scroggs, I live at three forty-four Dole's Boulevard. Um, I've lived in, on Dole's Boulevard for about eight years now. I moved up here from a large college town, uh, where Mr. Spillers already has, um, development there. And so I've seen some of the work that has been done. Um, I lived in a large college town all through my undergraduate career. And I know, um, how college students treat their houses and treat their apartments. I lived in a complex where we had ordinances, we were told you can't do this and you can't do this. But it was never upheld, and college students will be college students, and I understand that. Um, I'm not far removed from college and, um, I moved up here, um, eight years ago. And I grew up, coming up here to visit my grandmother. So I'm not from Milledgeville, but Milledgeville is very close to my heart. It is a place that I have, um, seen grow over the years, and I've decided to make this my permanent home. Um, I work here, I work at the college, I love this area, and I do not plan to move. I've seen though, over the years, the Dole's Boulevard area and the changes that have come. When I was younger and I came up here with my parents, um, there were families in the neighborhood and I would play with the kids in the street. And we would run around and we would walk to neighbors' houses and talk to them and greet them and eat with them. And it was a completely di- different atmosphere back then. Mr. Spillers has said he wants to take our neighborhood back to where it used to be. But in my opinion, that's not going to happen. It's not going to be what it used to be. Because those families have moved on and college students are there. But we can make the neighborhood better. Instead of building fifty-four houses, why not buy the properties that are for sale and for rent? And bring the houses back that are there? Those houses are beautiful houses. They have architecture and things that people love, they love old houses. But why not renovate those houses? Why not make the outside of the neighborhood beautiful too? If you put these fifty-four houses in, you're just putting in something, but you're still surrounding it wi- with what's already there. It's not going to fix the problem with what's around it. Um, one was, one thing that stuck with me, we met with Mr. Spillers a few years ago. Um, to talk about the project he was wanting to do. And there was one thing that kinda stuck with me. I went in with an open mind, trying to think, okay, how could this make our area better? Because I've seen the changes. And one thing that stuck with me that he said was, I'm not here to make friends. And that's been hard for me to swallow. And I've had a lot of time to process that and a lot of time to think about it. And I don't think he's here to make friends. I think he's here to do what's best for him. I don't think he's thinking about all the people that truly love this area and love this neighborhood. And, and have, you know, grown to see the changes here. Um, there will be more traffic if the houses are added. We have cars that are going by us all the time, all hours of the day, all hours of the night. I work, um, I have to be up and be out of my house at six AM. And there's constantly traffic and noise way into one, two AM. And it would only increase all of that. Um, even if you make access for the residents and give them a gated community? That doesn't mean they have to follow that, they can choose where they drive. There's no law that says you can only use one access point. So there, they can decide where they wanna enter and exit. Um, I, I'm tired of my yard being a trash can. I find cans and bottles and people outside my ar- my yard arguing all the time. And that would only increase. And I would rather, if he wants to put his efforts into making Milledgeville better, and he loves our community so much? I would rather him improve what's already there. And make that better for us. Because that's what we need, is somebody who really wants to make our neighborhood better. And not just push us to the side and add more to it. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? You may rebut now. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Gary, hold on. Would you like to say something? Uh, okay, sorry, I didn't see.
First, Gary, tell me how close you are to my property.
How close am I to your prop? The, uh, the common area of, of this joins your property?
I know it joins my property, but you were supposed to make adjustments and put a cul-de-sac there.
I did.
Now, how close is the cul-de-sac to Iva property?
Two hundred, two hundred fifty feet from right, from here up to the backside of there.
Well, you know, if you was two hundred and fifty miles from me, it wouldn't be far enough.
But, there's already two houses within a hundred feet of you, sitting right here.
Now.
So, these, these are, these, I, I made them as far back as we could get.
Ms. Sanders, would you give your name and address for the record too, please ma'am?
Okay. I'm Dale Sanders. I've been a resident at three sixty-three Dole's Boulevard for more than sixty years. And I've seen quite a few changes in that neighborhood. But first, I wanna get some things out of the way before I get into the spill. How many dwellings did you say would be on this eleven acres?
Thirteen, thirteen point six nine acres, and there'll be fifty-four.
Okay. Uh, I continue to be in agreement with the vast majority of the neighborhood. In opposing a development such as this magnitude. Fifty-four dwellings on thirteen point acres is too much for me to fathom, much less comprehend. I have a feel in the country, this eleven acres. And I stand there and I look at it and say, how can I fit fifty-four dwellings in that area? That is very crammed in. And another thing that I haven't written down, but is this. I understand that these lots will be sold to relatives. Relatives will buy these lots. And construct and sell to people from all walks of life. There will be all walks of life there. And, uh, I just, I don't, a development of this kind will only add more problems to the neighborhood. First, traffic and noise. Two hundred and fir- I first was told a hundred and fifty feet from another source, but if you say it's. I was first told a hundred and fifty feet, if you say two hundred and fifty feet from Iva property, it's not enough. I hear noise from my house across the branch. The hooting and the hollering and the music all hours of the night. And that's much further than two hundred and fifty feet. Now, just imagine, that many dwellings up there. Is going to be a lot of noise and a lot of traffic. Cause at any time. You're going to have at least a hundred and fourteen cars going in and out of there. At any time, that's just two people per dwelling. And that is a lot of traffic in a little small community that we have. Second, the crime rate and the drugs will exist. And soon, we'll be in an area like another development. I believe that I understand that it is in this district. It was approved. And now, it is just a crime house, uh, it's crime and drug infestation. And I'm seeing that with these lots and these dwellings sold to different levels of people. Soon enough, we're going to have another crime and drug infestation closer in town. Especially with college students. And I just feel like that this type of development is going to cause Iva property to depreciate. And you know, we've invested a lot in Iva home. We've been there sixty years, and my husband has renovated it many times. And I would hate my dead for my property to be devalued. And I think maybe me and one or two more is going to be impacted the most by this. Because of where my house is sitting. And maybe where Ms. Waldauer's house is sitting in front of the entrance there. And, uh, I just don't think at the ti- at, at this time, Iva community cannot accommodate a development of this nature. The development is not conducive to Iva small community. Uh, Iva small streets are in need of repair. We need curbs, we need water drains. And we have, right now, I have two, three water problems. A gully on each side of my house coming off of Dole's Boulevard. And now, it's cut through a flower bed and coming through my front yard and draining into the backyard. Now, we need curbs. And water drains, we need to prepare Iva little small community for such an environment as this. You know, you put this environment, the way he's described, it's like putting Taj Mahal in the middle of nowhere. And you know, I just don't, I don't see that. Uh, at this time, I beg. And I say, please, do not vote for this project. It will only destroy Iva privacy, especially mine. And others' privacy and depreciate the value of Iva property. And I say, may God bless y'all in making your vote. Cause it is important. And thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hale, may I ask you a question? Which walks of life in particular are you so concerned about coming into the neighborhood? And secondly, have you considered that the additional tax revenue from this new development could potentially raise the funds necessary to do improvements and streetscaping in your neighborhood?
And I don't care to express different walks of life. Because I think common sense would tell you that if those lots, relatives sell these lots to different people. There are going to be different levels of people there. That sooner or later is not going to keep their structure up to code. And nobody keep, I don't see a lot of code enforcement in Iva neighborhood. As I pointed out, the repair of streets. You know, this, this looks real good on paper, and it looks good when it's finished. But in ten, fifteen, twenty years, is it gonna look like that?
Could not the same be said for some of the other existing structures in the neighborhood?
What?
Couldn't the same be said for other existing structures in the neighborhood, some of the houses that are already there?
I didn't understand what you said.
Well, you, you're saying that, you're saying that the properties, when it's completed, will look great. I'm sure that many of the houses in this neighborhood looked great when they were completed.
Yes.
I'm just drawing a parallel between what's already there and what you're supposing might happen.
It's not going to add anything to Iva community.
Thank you.
I still say it's not conducive to Iva little small community.
Yes.
Um, in response.
You have to, you have to come up, thank you.
In response, um, the houses back then, when they were built, were beautiful houses. And just like these would be, I'm sure they would be wonderful houses. But if they're not kept up, um, over the years. But if they're not kept up, um, over the years, then they're going to turn around and turn into what we're seeing now. And that's why I said a little while ago, the houses that are there need the help right now. That's what, if we want to turn the neighborhood around, it's not about adding new stuff. That's not gonna turn the neighborhood around. Because when people come to look at the new houses, they're gonna see what's around it. And if they see what's around it, that's what they're gonna focus on. They're gonna see the older houses, and then they're gonna wonder why these new ones were stuck in the middle of older houses. It would be more beneficial to improve the older houses and make them more beautiful like they used to be. And then, improve the neighborhood by adding on at that point. But just adding new ones is not going to improve what's already there. It's going to take people who own the houses to step up and do more. Those of us who are homeowners, we work hard, we work in our yards, we take care of our houses. But all of those rental properties, a lot of those people don't even live in Milledgeville. The one next to me, he lives in Florida, and he's up here maybe once a year. To me, the renters, the people who own the houses now, they should be held responsible to take care of those houses. There should be some kind of code or something where if you own a house and you rent, you should be kept up to some level where you're responsible instead of busted-out windows and busted-down doors all the time. Those people who own the houses, even if they don't live in Milledgeville, should be required to take care of those houses. That's what's gonna make us better. Those of us who are here that are homeowners, we take care of our houses. We're not the houses that people ride through and look at and go, oh, my gosh, what happened to that house? We take care of our stuff. But the people who are in those green dots, who, those, those, most of those people don't live here. They don't take care of their property. That's nothing we can do. But we need help from Milledgeville and from people who want to improve our area. Those are the people who need to take over those green dots and actually make it better. That's the only thing that's gonna help us in the areas to make it better.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Can I say one other?
You, you have to come up to the podium, please, ma'am.
Maybe I, maybe I didn't stress the noise enough. But if you had lived in an area for sixty years, I think I'm maybe the oldest one in that neighborhood, oldest house. In fact, we bought Colonel Ennis's old home place when that place was called Ennis Heights. But, put yourself in my shoes. How would you like to live in a place and get this age and have to contend with the noise? Yes, I will hear every car that cranks up. And you're talking about a lot of cars going in and out that area. I will hear it. And that is something to think about. If you live there, how would you like your lifestyle be upset by such a development?
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Pearson. I live at three four two East Montgomery Street. I'm number thirty-one, the red dot. And I've lived there for ten years. And I'm a home provider for two special needs individuals. And I work with them twenty-four seven. And many nights, they are awakened because of language, wrecks, squealing tires, fights in my yard from anywhere from midnight, three, four o'clock in the morning. And the traffic is horrendous during college. Right now, it's, I'm enjoying this. You know, I really am. But it's gonna start, it's already started cranking up, and I can already start to see in the traffic. And with a development like this in our small neighborhood, it's just gonna be horrendous for me. And I'm, you know, and I'm talking about me. I know there's everybody else, okay? But it affects me at home with my folks. Because when you have a special need person that's woken up in the middle of the night, they don't go back to sleep. And so, you're up half the night, and then the next day, and then get them to sleep the next night. And so, it's, you know, I just, that's just where I'm at. And I know, you know, other people have different issues, but that's mine, and it's huge for me. And I say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, Gary, you can rebut.
I'd like to address the problem of the reason, I think, that the zoning board was confused about what was going on in, in the, some of the things that were said that night. We just had a guy come up here and tell y'all that basically that's a one-way street over there. And you can't get a full-size car, two full-size cars cannot pass. I want y'all to look at these pictures. These were made, these pictures were made in these areas. Two on Dole's Boulevard and the other over on, uh, Milledge. These are two full-size SUV vehicles. Seems to be a lot of room there.
That's not the street I'm talking about.
Hold on just a second.
Okay, I guess when you're talking about.
Travis, you don't have a chance to rebut, too.
That's not the street.
Uh, that's.
Well, I'm just showing you from four different, four, the four.
Hold on just a second. Ladies and gentlemen, we, we, we have to be orderly with this and dignified. And I would ask that you'd respect and decorum of these proceedings and not speak out from the audience. That's why we have these, this process and proceeds of rebuttals. So you'll have plenty of time after they conclude theirs, uh, for your rebut. Thank you so much.
That's number two. Seems to be a lot of room there. Now, one thing I think the city does need to do is get over there and scrape, uh, some of the roads sideways. 'Cause you can see that one is, is a little, but there's still plenty of room even with having to, uh, get on that, uh, dirt area. Now, these SUVs, these aren't small vehicles. And for somebody to get up here and tell y'all that, that two, two cars can't pass on this? There's another one. Same thing. Golly. Look at that. There's a lot of room. And this, this guy stood up here and told y'all, testified basically, I guess, that you can't get two vehicles down this. Also, he was talking about infrastructure. And apparently, this is probably why he didn't make it real estate. But the infrastructure of Dole's Boulevard, they said that the water pressure is poor there. Well, what he needs to do is get a good plumber. Because the water lines in Dole's Boulevard were completely replaced two years ago, i.e., from the, uh, uh, city engineer. All the three-inch lines were replaced by eight-inch lines. And then, we had some, one of the ladies said that there's not enough sewer in there. One of the biggest sewer lines in this area runs down Tanyard Creek. Of course, y'all know that. I, I gave y'all notes to that. But these people come up here and tell, like, the zoning board believed this stuff, apparently. And they should believe it if they say it. Just not true.
One of the things that we addressed and, you know, people took offense to about the neighborhood. I think you could agree, based on the comments that were made from the residents, there are, there's issues with the neighborhood. And, and to address those is, um, what you have to do. I mean, this isn't just some developer group. This woman that owns this piece of property, Ms. Lovelace, is an eighty-four-year-old woman, and this is her retirement. And so, if she can't sell this piece of land, she can't do anything with this land. That's a, a woman that can't do anything except, you know, have trees up there for you guys to, uh, to, to admire. So, you know, if she can't, if, if she can't develop the land, then the land is useless to her, it's worthless to her, and that's not fair to Mrs. Lovelace. The investment, I, I, you know, they just said a couple of times, um, that the green dots, there's disrepair. There's problems with those properties. That's what we were addressing when we said that about the neighborhood. I, I think we're in agreement on that, that there's an issue with the existing neighborhood. To bring twelve to fifteen million dollars into an area, there's going to be upward improvement on property values. That's an economic fact. It has to happen. And the houses that are in disrepair, people will drive by the neighborhood, see that they're selling two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar houses. And they will, they'll buy an eighty-thousand-dollar house and put forty thousand dollars into it, knowing that there's additional value there. There was a couple of lots, um, where was the street that Ashley, what, on?
On Green Street, just completed three houses.
Green Street, there was two older properties that were there. Combined into three lots, built the cottage product, sold it to this, sold it for two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, and they're already sold prior to completion. So, there is a demand for the product. It's already happening in the city of Milledgeville. Uh, you, the council people here approved that project, and, um, it's not very, it's been very successful. And that neighborhood obviously is gonna be improved because there's additional investment dollars there. You know, if we could buy up all the houses and, and do that, we would do that. And people will do that. But initially, you have to have additional investment in there. To go one-off investment is not gonna bring the dollars to the neighborhood that you need. And when you talk about traffic patterns, you can see the yellow line is obviously ideal. I don't know why anybody would go Dole's Boulevard around the circle back to Milledge Avenue. Um, that would be, you know, that's, that's not a wise thing to do. Uh, could they go on, uh, North Albert there, probably, to Milledge? But that circle there is, is gonna be the traffic pattern. Dole's Boulevard is not going to be the traffic pattern for this neighborhood. And that's what we corrected from Mrs. Sanders' statements last time, is that we did have a, a gate coming there. It was only an emergency gate. There would've been no traffic there. But if there was an emergency vehicle, it was a crash gate to get through that cul-de-sac. We consulted with the city and the, and the engineer and was able to put that cul-de-sac in there. So now, there is no, um, traffic gonna be there. There's nothing that's gonna come through Dole's Boulevard on this particular property. Doesn't make any sense whatsoever for somebody to take a left on Dole's, go all the way around, come back down to Milledge and go into the property. It's just, it's not gonna happen. Uh, and we did that, as from the last meeting, to appease the owners that were there who were complaining about Dole's Boulevard. And so, we met those objections. The other objections that they're voicing here, I can understand. If you live in this neighborhood and you have houses that are similar to that next door to you, you want to correct that. And that's what we're here to do. It's not an enemy situation. We walk in, so here's the enemy. That's not the situation. We're here to try to help improve the, the neighborhood.
Hold on, Ms. Blodower.
And so, I don't know.
This is rebuttal for in favor, correct? Yes, sir.
Uh, what I noticed that seemed to be the main theme throughout every person that stood up is how bad the college students are in Milledgeville. I mean, just about everyone unto a person, you know, had negative things to say about college students in general. Milledgeville has two great colleges in it. And that's a thriving part of our city economy. It brings the culture and everything else to this town. Milledgeville's different than most towns because they have a lot of professional people here. But, you know, every student that goes to that college is not somebody that's running rampant through the yards, through the streets. And who knows? Those probably aren't even college students. They could be anybody. But I think to, to put such a negative cast on a development when it's not necessarily a college development. Yes, people can rent, those college students can rent them, families can rent them, anybody. But I, I think that, you know, that you're, you're trying to put such a bad taste in everyone's mouth about the people that choose to come here and, and go to our universities and colleges. And, you know, that, that just doesn't make sense that everybody, you know, is gonna be running, running amok. And so, I, I, I think that, you know, the way this is planned out, there's an entry here, but it's not really running through Dole's Boulevard at all. So, that's all I gotta say about that. I, I just think that there needs to be a little more respect for the people that come here and choose to get their education.
Anyone else in favor?
And I think it's time to end. All this stuff would be in a hurry. Yeah, but there's fifteen people that own houses that live in this area. That's a fact. Well, we ought to respect those fifteen people, everyone. We ought to. It's like a power line. You can't let three people stop, stop the show. And the pavement is twenty-three to twenty-five feet. I measured it myself, and having been a long-time surveyor, uh, Highway forty-nine is twenty-five feet wide. So, I understand, the gentleman said two cars can't pass. And I understand where he's coming from. He's around that one in competition. But this, there's plenty of room in this neighborhood, twenty-five, twenty-three to twenty-five feet with sidewalks. That needs some help. But let's don't forget, this is a rental neighborhood. This is a college town, and this is something for college.
Anyone else in favor for rebuttal? Travis.
May I, counsel, I said I wouldn't go get emotional, so I apologize for my outburst. That's not like me. Uh, a couple of things. I believe what I said was two cars can't barely pass each other. I drive a full-size Ford pickup truck. Unlike some of these landlords, I'm over there two or three times a week. I keep my places up. I drive through the neighborhood. The roads that he showed were Montgomery Street. It had lines down the middle, am I right? The roads I'm talking about.
Hold on, hold on, Gary. Golly. We're not, we're, we're not going to devolve into a, a debate and, and argument with each other. Do we understand? I mean, we cannot keep order and make an appropriate decision if everybody keeps yelling back at each other. Okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. We've been going up in that neighborhood about five or six years, living there. But like I said, I'm through there every week, almost every few days. When you're driving on Dole's Boulevard safely, two cars, full-size trucks, cannot pass each other. Then, what I said, when you add kids walking, college kids parking on the side of the road, those sort of things, you, you just create a situation with an accident waiting to happen. We've seen wrecks when I lived out there, right in front of my house. Uh, so, a couple of other things. I didn't say anything about the water. But I'm glad he brought that up because I forgot that part. Um, and I do have a good plumber. Actually, my wife's uncle's a plumber. Two out of the three houses that I own over there, we actually had to replumb the entire house. We dug it up. Ms. Holschek can attest to this. She saw it all the way out to the street. Um, so, we, we paid big bucks to replumb the whole house. Uh, still, I would, I would consider that water pressure after we did that is very minimal. Now, the third house that I have around Montgomery, the city's put in a huge water drain, great, almost in my driveway. Uh, you know, every time it rains, the rocks go down. So, there are infrastructure problems. Again, these are facts. It's not disputable. So, students, I was a student in Georgia College. I love the students. The problems in the neighborhood over there, a lot of times are not caused by the students. Some of my best renters over there have been students. Uh, you know, they want to do the right thing. You go have a conversation with them. And, and, uh, but some of the worst issues we've had, for lack of a better term, were some of the low-end housing over there in that neighborhood. They give ten times more problems than the students do. Um, he said, I was gonna worry about the competition. I'm not in competition, uh, with that. I do manage about twenty different rental properties. I do have a real estate license. I would love to, you can't find a bigger pro-development person. Y'all know me in this room. You're not gonna find one. I'm very, very pro-development. If the developer that y'all had a few weeks ago was here planning this development, I might have a different opinion. Okay? Um, so, and I asked a question other, earlier, and they never answered it. What I wanted to know was fifteen-million-dollar investment, do you have a good faith letter from the bank backing that up? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to get an answer to that question.
You'll have to get it afterwards.
I know that Mr. Spillers said that this was these two ladies' retirement. I don't want her- I don't want her retirement to impinge on my rights and my privacy. I've lived next to this neighborhood, this tract of land, for many years. I was there when their mother sold every inch she could. She never left an entrance for those girls to get into this property. So, I don't think I should suffer for her decisions that Ms. Garner made years ago for these two daughters. I really do not. Like I say, I've been there longer than anybody else in that neighborhood, and I know what went on. And I don't want to get into the history of it because Ms. Garner had some issues with the city back yonder forty years ago when Mr. Sanford was in office, and I know all about it.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Reddick, I live at three-three Seven Dolls Boulevard. Sir, when college students move in, if they move next door to me, I get to know them, and I get to know their parents. Because I would like, if my children are living in a town, that they would know, and they would have somebody that they knew were going to be there every day. Not just four years and then they're gone. So, I'm there, and I'm an anchor in that neighborhood, and they know where they can come to, you know, if they need some help. So, I'm, I'm, we're not anti-college students by any means. I think, um, the red dots are the homeowners. Well, I'm proud of those red dots. And, um, I think that, I call it a piggyback neighborhood because it's, it's structured on the back of a neighborhood that's already been established. And it was a nice, quiet little neighborhood, raised two boys there, and I don't think it'll be that way once this happens.
Please, please vote.
Anyone else in opposition to rebuttal? This concludes the presentation of the evidence. Council members, do you have any questions and/or comments?
Mayor Bentley?
Yes, ma'am.
I have some comments. I, I don't want Mr. Spillers to think that I, or, you know, make statements about the, the neighborhood of the students, that we're anti-student or anti, um, anything else. It's just that we live in that neighborhood, and most of the people that get up here to speak have to talk about their experiences because those experiences are real. I just moved my daughter out of a, um, she attended school at Georgia Southern, and she stayed for four years in a community such as this, down at Georgia Southern. So, I do know what college students do, and, um, I know how many of them. It, it was a situation where there were four students, but I do know how many were there, and it was always more than four at most of the time that they were there. And, and so, so many others are the same way. So, you know, you, you have the best intentions. I'm sure the landlords had the best intentions, but it was always that some of their friends that didn't have a place to stay, or their money had run out, and they stayed there. They camped out wherever they could because that's how they, that's how they work. I've just moved her into another community at, in, in Athens, the University of Georgia, a gated community. That's, you know, the, the, the homes are set up very, very similar to what you're doing. So, I'm not removed from that. I understand. I understand the concept, and I understand what happens. I, we, uh, in Millersville, we embrace the students here. In, in that neighborhood, that, and, and the Dolls Boulevard neighborhood, there are a lot of students there. And the majority of them that are there are, are fairly decent, but you know it, it can only take one or two to, to, to ruin the whole neighborhood. And, and they do walk a lot at night. They're out a lot at night. You can hear them talking two and three o'clock in the morning, and I work just like, just like everybody else. But we, we have to bear with what we have to bear. They are out later at night because they have later classes, and they do walk, and they talk, and the girlfriends and boyfriends argue, and they fuss, and they fight, and they stop right there because I have a street light right in my yard, and they stop a lot of times up under the light, and they argue right there before they go on to where they're going. And, and they have parties, and they, you know, some of them are nice enough to say, we're going to have a big party this weekend. You know, would you mind anybody parking, uh, right around your street? Because they, most of the time, they have to park in the street because the yards are not large enough to accommodate them. We can have cars up and down that road to the point to where only one car can go through on Dolls Boulevard around to Millage, single file. So, we, we've experienced all that. So, what you're hearing is not just people being angry or talking against college students. They're just talking about the things that have been experienced in that neighborhood. That's not to say that they, that I, I didn't hear a single person stand up here and say, we don't want the people that are in our neighborhood right now to be there. They just don't want the additional. They, you know, and, and Ms. Pierce, when she talks about how it's going to impact her, yes, she does have special needs, um, um, individuals there in her home. And where you're talking about bringing the traffic through, it's going to greatly impact her and greatly impact that because they're going to be passing by her house, and right there in front of her house, she's right at the intersection, and there are a lot of fights there. There are a lot of things that go on there because people walk constantly all night long, not only from the Dolls Boulevard area, but from Riverbend, the Riverbend area, and, and all of the communities that surround there. They walk all the time. They walk through the neighborhoods. They, you know, they make a shortcut through Dolls Boulevard to Jefferson Street because it's easier rather than them going up and going all the way around. So, we do experience all of these things, and we are afraid that this is going to add an additional. The traffic is going to be an additional impact as well as, um, the people that are going to be back and forth in the community. I looked at the pictures that you have. I really cannot figure out where on Dolls Boulevard that is because I live on Dolls Boulevard. There's no curb anywhere on Dolls Boulevard. And I saw, and I saw the, I looked at all four of them that you have, and I was trying to figure out where, where that is, with the, with the double lines in there. I didn't recognize it at all.
Do you, would you like him to answer?
Not really. He didn't have to answer it.
Mr. Bradshaw just wanted to confirm. Councilman, you live in this neighborhood? You live on Dolls Boulevard?
I live on Dolls Boulevard.
Would that not be a reason to abstain from this particular vote?
No.
No?
No.
Because I think she already has an opinion on it.
But she represents these people here, so she has a right to vote. Ladies and gentlemen, this, this particular, okay, this, this particular part is for councilmembers to, um, ask questions of each other or comments. Now, I'll allow them to an individual booth. That's what you're going to do if you want an answer from someone, uh, if you would call them up. But if you just ask a rhetorical question, that's fine.
It makes statement about some, uh, new apartments were built, you know, Green Street, where, where you say? Where's the location you were talking about?
On Green Streets. Uh, I'm not sure what the Charles Street is on Green Street.
About there.
There was two houses, two lots.
It's going to be on Clark Street. It's on Clark Street. Yeah, that, that's why you have me confused, but like, but like, like the young lady said, I work in my neighborhood. Anywhere that is dilapidated property, you want to come in and build a new house, come to my neighborhood, in my district. And like that lady said, that we, we are spending too much time trying to do other things, just trying to correct where we have problems at. And I'm, I'm riding around my district every day trying to find some more problems. The way the property dilapidated, they want to come in and build some new building, I work in.
That's what we're trying to do here, yes, Council.
Three, there's three of them.
Right. And the second thing, we didn't, we didn't approve that. They went through the variance committee, and the variance approved it, but they're trying to get a variance. It did not come through this body.
It was actually reduced to three. Also, it was four at the beginning of it.
It should be five.
It was, it was four houses, it was reduced to three. But they agreed to three.
Right, I'm saying, we didn't approve it.
Right.
They mentioned that we approved it. We didn't approve it, it went through the variance committee.
Anybody else, Council? Yes, sir.
Yeah. I wanted to make, um, some comments. First of all, uh, I lived on Dolls Boulevard in nineteen fifty-nine, where we moved to. Lived in one half of the duplex with my mom and dad. Somehow, that duplex still stands. I guess somebody took a little care of it along the way. Moved from there all the way over to Baldwin Avenue. Lived in a brick home beside Ms. McCoy. I got in trouble a lot of times about getting in her pear tree. Lived there until I was probably ten years old, and then, uh, we moved from there. Played around there, and, and it was a different situation at that point in time. It certainly was, um, a lot more family-oriented. One thing that I think about when I think about this neighborhood, and I, and I do, and I hate to admit this, but take shortcuts sometimes down through, uh, Albert and across to Thomas and, and down through that way. And, um, I think perception is reality a lot of times. You can show two SUVs that, uh, that maybe can go side by side or miss each other without any problem. But the street and the way it's set up, the fact that it doesn't have any curb and gutter, the fact that it doesn't have much area before it drops off into a drainage ditch can create that perception that it is smaller. If you look at North Jefferson Street and you ride side by side on a four-lane, it seems a lot smaller than North Columbia Street does where it is four-lane. But it's the exact same dimensions, and it has a lot to do with the way that the right-of-way has been developed. The concern that I have about this is that one of our busiest intersections that we have in this community is at Montgomery and Albert. We have a lot of truck traffic that comes through there, especially coming from Hancock, coming across the bridge, turning, and then turning again back on to Montgomery. And while the four-way stop seems to handle that traffic, if what you say is true, I'm not real sure exactly how much what we're going to end up needing to do as a, uh, city, or what it's going to create as far as traffic and the flow if everybody's coming out on to Montgomery. On the reverse side of that, I see kids, and I, I can't quite get it straight as to what we're looking for because I hear somebody, one of you say that we're looking for young professionals, we're looking for young couples, so on and so forth. Another say that we're looking at, uh, at college students, and I'm, I'm just not real sure. I can just about bet you that the market is going to be parents from Atlanta buying houses for college students, more than likely. But, but human nature is going to tell someone after several attempts to come up to this four-way intersection that sooner or later, it's going to be a little bit easier to cut through, and I think that's where you're going to get. Maybe it is a little bit longer, but it's going to be a little bit faster, and the faster part concerns me. The fact that we don't have much of a right-of-way that goes straight to a ditch, that we do have some walking traffic that is already in, in, and, uh, can't talk, in an existing neighborhood. I, I, I think we're just looking at something that is potentially going to be a situation where people are either going to stop trying to live over in this area because it's going to become too congested in that one strip of Dolls Boulevard that comes back and winds back around, or, or we're going to end up having an accident over there, and somebody's going to be hurt badly. And that, that does concern me. One of the things that this community is trying to do, and that is to get back to a, a little bit more healthy lifestyle and thereby creating situations within certain parts of this community where it's going to be bike accessible. Little small streets and slow streets and things like that are already that way. We don't have to do a whole lot to it. These kids can have, that live over in here, that are college kids and everything, can walk the street and not feel so much in fear of traffic coming up on them. I think the, the thing that concerns me most is that, uh, Gary, you've called me several times about this, and, and we've talked. You've told me about the changes, and I just don't see much that has changed in what we looked at a year or so ago, other than the cul-de-sac. And the fact that you won't have, whether it was emergency exit or a real exit, whatever it is, that you're not going to have that much traffic. I think everything about it, and especially the density of it, in relation to what is already a busy street with East Montgomery, with all the traffic that the city has that flows back and forth down through there, that we're just looking for a situation that, uh, that is going to be very troublesome at some point in time. That is the way I feel about it after having looked at it, and I've looked at it hard. I don't, I don't think it... What, what the community over there says doesn't diminish what I know that we need within this city, and that is job creation and some development and things of that nature. But I think at the same time, we just have to try to figure out where it's going to be the most viable location for that to happen. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about this right here. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mullins? Anybody else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Bentley, I would like to make the motion to, for us to accept the findings from the planning and zoning and disapprove of the request.
Thank you. Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here and now, ask the clerk to call a roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Okay, the decision, the planning and zoning is upheld. Uh, we'll move on to new business. Do we need to suspend if anyone wants to leave? We only have just a little bit left to go. Well, that's why I was trying to keep you in check. We're suspended, yes, we're suspended. New business, ask the clerk to read Resolution zero-two-four, please, in caption. To authorize a consent order with the Environmental Protection Agency. Entertain a motion, counsel?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. End discussion. Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Next, ask the clerk to read Resolution zero-two-five in caption, please. To authorize contract with Executive Cleaning Incorporated for weekly, monthly, special event, and after-hours cleaning of the Economic Development Center located at one-oh-five East Hancock Street. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. End discussion.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How long the contract for?
Twelve months, I think, so. And then there's a, the city has an option to, maybe for another year.
You, you leave your, uh, we're, we're, here.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Oh, sorry. It says under contract.
It says under contract twelve months. Okay.
Mr. Chambers? Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Next, I'd ask the clerk to read Resolution zero-two-six in caption, please. To authorize contract with Smith Allen Consulting to prepare and submit a community development block grant for sewer infrastructure improvements. I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. End discussion. Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
That passes. I can't imagine there's anything further to come before council, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.